Everyone. Where's my agenda go? Just had it here. Good morning. I want to welcome everybody to the April 30th, 2024 meeting of the Denton County Commissioners' Court. We're glad to have those of y'all in attendance and welcome to all of those who are tuning in. We're glad to have you watch our meeting today. As we start our meeting, I just want to make a little comment here. You know, our heartfelt prayers go out to the families and fellow officers, four law enforcement officers killed in the line of duty, as well as the four who were injured during an attempt to serve a warrant in Charlotte, North Carolina. We keep our law enforcement personnel's in our thoughts as they continue to serve us here in Denton County each day. We also send our prayers to the families and friends of the four people who lost their lives during the tornadoes. The devastated several communities just north of us in Oklahoma. We also have those who lost their homes and businesses in our thoughts and we are very appreciative of the many people here in Denton County who are collecting supplies and, and funds to help those impacted by the recent storms just across the Red River. So I want to thank all those people at Denton County that are helping our friends and neighbors to the north. So those are tough jobs. Our law enforcement wanted to keep all those individuals, their families in our prayers. At this time, I'd like to welcome Cheryl, Cheryl Wright, and she's with our Denton County Prayer Task Force. And she is going, Cheryl's going to lead us in our invocations and our pledges will be led by one of our very own, our former Denton County Director of Purchasing, Ms. Beth Fleming. So if you'll please stand, I want to remind everybody to please turn off your cell phones.
Bow with me, please. Heavenly Father, we come into your presence today and we thank you and we praise you for who you are. You are our God, our Deliverer, our joy, our comfort, and our Father. We know, God, that you are watching over us and that as our Jehovah Shalom, you want good for us. We praise you and we give you honor and glory. We're thankful that you have placed Judge Eads and these commissioners, Commissioner Williams, Commissioner Faulkner, Commissioner Edmondson, and Commissioner Mitchell in this court. We know that it is by your design and created for exactly this moment in time. And we pray that you will ever be their guide, their arm of justice, and the thing that they lean on for your wisdom. We pray that in the decisions that are made today, that the wisdom, justice, mercy, and honor will prevail. In Jesus' precious name I pray. Amen. Please join me in the pledges. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
Thank you, Cheryl. And thank you, Beth. Okay. At this time, I'd like to go to item number one, which is our public input for items not listed on the agenda. And we have one registered speaker today, and it's Ms. Chelsea Stallings. Good morning.
All right, good morning. I'm sorry, I'm kind of sick right now, so bear with me.
Well, thank you.
Excuse me, my name is Chelsea Stallings. I live in Denton, Texas, 76201. And I have just a little update this morning on the St. John Cemetery. I know Mr. Huds, Beth and I have been in here working on this. I actually just put a link to Dropbox in the commentary of this that's being published or being streamed on the Denton County, Texas site, on the Facebook site. This past week, doing some research, building on that which has already been done of County Commissioner Hub Clark and his access of the lands, fraudulently accessing the lands that the St. John Cemetery were on. This past week, I discovered the existence of two mineral leases on that property. One is in 1927 from the man who had owned the property prior to Hub Clark. His name was T.P. Taylor. Thomas Patton Taylor was actually the uncle-in-law of Mr. Hub Clark. And then when Mr. Taylor passed away, Hub Clark as the commissioner was the executor of his estate. He oversaw the seizure and the selling of the land to a private citizen, F.S. Wilson, who then turned around and sold it back to Hub Clark later that year. The, the part that I really want to let everyone know that is pretty important to this story is in 1935, when Hub Clark was a Denton County Commissioner, this is after T.P. Taylor has died. He has accessed the land. He also got a mineral lease. It also included extensive language from the Denton County Judge at the time, George Albert. And I just want to read off a portion of what is included in this mineral lease. "In the event of a resurvey of said land shall reveal the existence of excess and/or vacant lands lying adjacent to the lands above described, and the lesser his heirs or assigns shall by virtue of his ownership of the lands above described have preference right to acquire said excess and/or vacant lands for a term of 10 years from this date." And that language is repeated many times in this mineral lease, that any of the excess land surrounding the black community and the black cemetery, should that land find itself vacant or excess, that now Mr. Hub Clark, as the executor of this mineral lease, has preference to acquire those lands. So this is looking pretty bad because it does include language with County Judge George Albert. So I am already working with my contacts down in Austin, the General Land Office, the Railroad Commission, to first of all verify the validity of this mineral lease, also see if we can find out any yields that were coming off of the property during this time. And I, I guess that's all that I have for today. I believe that this is really important to the story and it unfortunately does show collusion with the county of taking this black land. So we do hope to continue this research.
I don't think it was a position of the county. I don't know if it was a position of the county at the time.
I'm sorry, I didn't.
I don't know if that's a position of the county.
I don't know for sure and I don't want to lay blame anywhere. That's why I'm trying to still look for documents, but.
Thank you.
We'll continue it and make sure it's published. Thank you.
Okay. Let's just go to item three, which is our resolutions, awards, reports, and presentations. Let's go to item 3B. I believe Mr. Kirby Hicks is not in attendance, so we will, we will delay that till later in the meeting. Let's go to item 3B, which is approval of a proclamation recognizing April 2024 as Sexual Assault Awareness Month. And do we have Lori Nelson with us today? There we go. I would love to, we would love to see everybody. If y'all come forward, item 3B is approval of a proclamation recognizing April 2024 as Sexual Assault Awareness Month.
Good morning, commissioners, judges. I continue to find myself as the face and the voice of adult sexual assault here in Denton County, but I want to make it very clear. Oh, thank you, sir. I want to make it very clear that the real work is being done by the people who are surrounding me here, those who are supporting victims of sexual assault, investigating and holding offenders accountable and prosecuting those offenders. I just get the pleasure of standing in front of the microphone. And I want to thank each one of you for your support of our Denton County Sexual Assault Response Team and also for taking the time this morning to proclaim this month as Sexual Assault Awareness Month. And I told Teresa when I was getting it on the agenda that though it may be the last day of April, that just means that we are not done. We are just moving forward from this point on, really into perpetuity. And so I thank you all. Would any of y'all like to say something?
Oh, yes. Oh, I love it.
Good morning.
Good morning. My name is Abby DeShazow. I'm currently the Assistant Director of Community-Based Advocacy at Friends of the Family. And I have the pleasure of overseeing a team of advocates and a team of volunteers who provide support to survivors of sexual assaults, both adult and children, by going out to the hospitals and providing that accompaniment and support and ensuring that all survivors who are interested in free and confidential services can get access to that regardless of any barriers that they may experience, whether that be income, transportation, or just hesitancy and fear. So we, we thank you for allowing us the space to be able to, to talk about the work that we do and for standing with us as a community to ensure these survivors have the services that they need and these offenders are held accountable. So thank y'all very much.
Perfect. Thank you. Thank y'all for what y'all do. I'll go ahead and read this. This is a court proclamation regarding Sexual Assault Awareness Month. Where sexual assault, abuse, and assault are widespread problems. In the United States alone, nearly one in five women and one in 67 men have been raped at some time in their lives. And one in four girls and one in 20 boys are sexually abused by the age of 17. In fact, an American is sexually assaulted every 68 seconds. And where a sexual assault affects every adult, teen, and child in Denton County, either as a victim, survivor of sexual assault, or as a family member, significant other, friend, neighbor, or coworker. And where as few survivors of sexual violence seek help immediately after victimization due to shame or fear of not being believed, in order to end sexual assault, we must alleviate these fears. We must begin by believing. And whereas Denton County Friends of the Family Staff and Volunteers provide comprehensive and compassionate services to those impacted by sexual assault, including a survivor advocate team responding 24/7 to local hospitals and law enforcement agencies to support victims of sexual assault. And whereas during April 2024 marks the 23rd annual, I mean anniversary of Sexual Assault Awareness Month, during which Denton County Friends of the Family will be intensifying efforts to promote public understanding of sexual assault, publicizing their services, emphasizing the need for increased community support for their agency and to raise awareness of needs of survivors. And now therefore be resolved, the Denton County Commissioners' Court does hereby proclaim the month of April 2024 as Sexual Assault Awareness Month. Done in open court, this is the 30th day of April 2024 upon a motion made by Commissioner Mitchell, seconded by Commissioner Edmondson. Any comments?
I just want to thank Denton County Friends of the Family, our partners with the DAs and the law enforcement for all that you do to help alleviate this terrible, terrible tragedy that happens to our citizens here in Denton County and all over the world. I know it's a tough job. I can imagine, because when I hear about it on TV somewhere, and you all live it every day. Thank you for all you do and please know that this Commissioners' Court is here to help you to do all we can also to alleviate this horrible tragedy. Thank you.
I second everything that Commissioner Mitchell has said. The thing that struck me about her remarks is that you all live this every day. We hear about it or see it on TV, but this is something that affects you daily and we can't thank you enough for standing in the gap for all the rest of us. Thank you for what you're doing.
Any other comments?
Thank you all for what you do. Thank you.
Well, as we say so many times, we do these proclamations that part of the first step in dealing with the issue is to talk about it, to talk about it publicly, right? And so when you listen to those sobering statistics, it really brings it home, the severity of the problem that it's widespread in all four corners of this county and across America and the world. And so I'm so glad that we have y'all answering that very tough call to help your fellow resident in their greatest time of need. So thank y'all for each one, what you do. I know that's an emotional burden that you carry and you carry home with you. And I just want to thank you for, for doing that, not only just an eight-to-five job, but after hours and what that, how that impacts you personally. I'm very aware of that as all the court is. And so thank y'all for what you do. All right, here are other comments. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you so much. Hold on a minute. We're going to get a picture real quick. These are good people. I don't believe we have anyone here for 3C. There's anyone here for 3C? I don't believe that we do. We'll do that at the end of the meeting. I do know we have people here for 3D. This is approval of a proclamation recognizing Denton County National Day of Prayer Task Force and the appropriate action. And I know we have Beth and Cheryl here and many others. Do y'all want to come forward and we'll acknowledge y'all? Go right ahead, Beth.
Cheryl's going to speak.
Oh, Cheryl. Yes. Good morning.
Good morning. We want to thank Andy and all the commissioners for your generous time that you've given us and the amphitheater. It is a beautiful facility and we're hoping that we'll be able to be out there this year. But we're going to hold that off until tomorrow to squeak it to the last second so we can do that. But we really appreciate everything that the, this court does and we will probably have to ask for us to be in here on Thursday. But, but we're waiting. We're hoping that we can have it out there. But we sincerely appreciate everything that this court has done and thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you. We're glad to have y'all here. Y'all, it was the first one we had in this, in the courtroom. I think that was very special.
We did. It was our very first one.
It was a very special day in this room. So I'll go ahead and read this court proclamation recognizing Denton County National Day of Prayer Task Force. And whereas the National Day of Prayer is an annual observance held on the first Thursday of May, inviting people of all faiths to pray for the nation. It was created in 1952 by a joint resolution of the United States Congress and signed into law by President Harry S. Truman. Whereas the National Day of Prayer allows the people of the United States to plan and prepare to intercede as a corporate body on behalf of the nation and its leaders from year to year with certainty. And whereas the act of prayer is both an expression of religious belief and an act of speech that is protected by the First Amendment to the Constitution of the United States. It raises the magnitude of America's problems within and without the country, evidence and need for divine healing and guidance. And whereas Denton County National Day of Prayer Task Force operates under the umbrella of the National Day of Prayer Task Force, which represents a Judeo-Christian expression of the national observance with the mission to mobilize the Christian community to intercede for America's leaders and its families with the 2024 theme of lift up the word, light up the world. And now therefore be resolved, the Denton County Commissioners' Court, Denton County, Texas, does hereby recognize the Denton County National Day of Prayer Task Force and the program scheduled for Thursday, May the 2nd, 2024 at noon at the Denton County Administrative Courthouse encourages all citizens to participate in corporate prayer for this great nation on this designated day. Done in open court, this is the 30th day of April 2024 upon a motion made by Commissioner Mitchell, seconded by Commissioner Faulkner. Any discussion? Well, we're excited to have y'all here today in, in the courtroom as we do this proclamation. We're excited to see y'all Thursday later this week. So thank y'all so much for everything. Any members you want to add to it? We'll look forward to seeing you there. All right. We have a motion, a second. Oh, did you want to say something?
Yeah, we did.
I just want to thank you all for doing this. Lord knows, today we need this more than ever in our country's history. So thank you so much and I hope all people here in Denton County will consider, if not able to come, to pray from their own homes at the same time. Thank you guys so much.
Thank you also. You know, many years ago, before I was in office, we didn't get to do all these wonderful things that we're getting to do now. And I'm so glad that we have someone that's praying for the decisions that we make and praying for our nation and our country, that things will be better. Because I truly believe it's prayer. I know they said prayer is taken out of school, but it's not taken out of our soul and our mind. And I truly believe if we didn't have prayer, that our world would be much worse than it is now. So I want to thank you all for continuing to pray and thank you for praying for your government because Lord knows we need it. We make decisions every day for millions, not this court. We just make decisions for thousands, but well, we do make millions. We have 1.6 million people now. So we make decisions for millions of people all over this county and other people make decisions and we need prayer. I need someone to pray for me to make sure that I make the decision that benefits the citizens and not just benefit me and my family. So thank you for all that you do. I certainly appreciate it. Keep up the good work, please.
All right. Any other comments?
I just concur with that and say I agree 100% that the power of prayer is immense and something we too often don't take with enough effort, right? And so I'm so happy that you all are, are doing that and encouraging even more prayer because we can always use more.
Perfect. Bring it. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank y'all.
Yeah. I was at that one, yeah, when we were all packed. We were all packed in here.
That's awesome. We'll share with them. Okay. Let's go ahead and do, we'll go ahead and do 3E. This is a court proclamation recognizing Huffin's Autos 100th Anniversary. Wow, what a, what a birthday. It rises on May the 5th, 1924. J.L. Huffin Senior founded Huffin's Motor Company in downtown Denton, establishing a business that has thrived on the principles of treating customers with respect and supporting the local community for which the Huffin's family has continued to demonstrate a longstanding commitment to community development. And whereas the Huffin's family moved their dealership to Louisville in 1927, contributing to the community at a time when the local infrastructure was still developing with a population of only 700 to 750 people. with a population of only 700 to 750 people and dirt roads. And whereas the pioneer spirit of Huffines Motor Company has showcased early on when the first vehicle's capabilities were demonstrated by driving it up the steps at the southeast corner of the Denton County Courthouse and the library steps of what is now the University of North Texas. And whereas the Huffines family donated a 15-acre plot off Valley Parkway in the mid-1990s to the Louisville Independent School District, where Huffines Middle School now stands in memory of Mr. Huffines, who served on the Louisville ISD School Board in the 1940s and the Louisville City Council from 1941 to 1949. And whereas through expansions to include eight locations, Huffines Auto Dealerships have provided employment and outstanding customer service across Plano, Denton, Louisville, and McKinney, earning recognition as one of the top 100 places to work in DFW by the Dallas Morning News in 2011 and 2012. And whereas the core values of friendship, integrity, and communities, and community support instilled by J.L. Huffines Senior have been carried on through generations, ensuring that residents of Denton and Collin County continue to experience the small-town friendliness and exceptional service that are hallmarks of Huffines Auto Dealerships. And whereas Mr. Ray Huffines has admirably continued the family legacy by giving back to the community, supporting local schools and contributing to charitable organizations throughout Denton County. And whereas Denton County is proud to recognize Huffines Auto Dealerships as the oldest family-owned company in the area and join them in celebrating 100 years of continuous business and exemplary service in our community. Now therefore be it resolved, the Denton County Commissioners Court does hereby proclaim May the 5th, 2024, as Huffines Auto Dealership Day in Denton County and urges all residents to join us in celebrating the centennial milestone, acknowledging the profound impact that Huffines Auto Dealerships have had on our local, community, and economy. Done in open court, this is the 30th day of April, 2024, upon a motion by Commissioner Mitchell, seconded by the Chair. Any discussion? Commissioner Mitchell?
I just, I just want to thank the Huffines family that have been employed in Denton County and have been providing not only cars and land, but assistance to families in the Louisville-Denton County area. And there's a surprise for Mr. Ray Huffines on Friday night at the Louisville Gala, Gala.
There wa, there was a surprise.
There is, there is a surprise and I won't say what it is, but there is gonna be a surprise on that night. He's out, he's out of state, so hopefully he won't see this. But we have that planned for Louisville and we thought we were gonna do outside in the park, but it looks like we're gonna have to go to the sparrow, Laura. I mean, Laurie, because it looks like it's gonna rain. But I want to thank the Huffines family for all they do for Denton County. They've been friends of all of ours, even though you may not have bought a car from them, but they've done something. Your kids may not have gone to Huffines Middle School, but they've done something for, for the county. So, thanks to the Huffines family and all that you do for Denton County.
Any, any other comment? Well, I would just like to add a personal note and I grew up not too far from the Huffines Dealerships in Louisville. And, you know, my dad grew up in Louisville and it's fun to go through his yearbooks. And you can see the Huffines Dealerships sponsoring the yearbooks and educational enterprises all these years ago, 60-plus years ago. And I was on Louisville Education Foundation and the Huffines have always been such big supporters of the community and on so many other boards I've been on and many of y'all have probably been on too, that the Huffines have been such good corporate citizens. And, and every county should be so blessed to have a Huffines dealership in your county. And so, they're truly an example of free enterprise, doing things the right way, and watching your business grow for decades. And so, we're very, very proud to have them be residents and corporate residents here in Denton County. So, congratulations, we wish you another 100 years if they're still making cars 100 years from now, so. Good, I don't know who's gonna be driving you, it won't be me. All right, we have a motion and a second. Any other comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you Commissioner for delivering that to the Huffines appropriately. I know you're, you're excited about that. Next, let's have our Office of History and Culture, item 3F, which is approval of a proclamation recognizing May, 2024, as National Preservation Month and any appropriate action. Kim, are you gonna open this one up or Kelsey? Go right ahead.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Um, thank you Judge and Commissioners for helping us kick off our third annual Denton Revealed Preservation Month celebration. Um, I'd like to recognize our Denton Revealed team. We have Kim Cupid, who is our curator of collections at the Denton County Office of History and Culture. Cameron Robertson, who is the Historic Preservation Officer for the City of Denton. And Chuck Volenger, who is with Special Collections at the Denton Public Library. Of our team, we put together a great calendar events. Kim is gonna give you guys a poster. Um, I think there are at least nine, we have nine events throughout the whole month of May, um, celebrating preservation in the City of Denton and across the county as well. Some of these highlights include, um, there's a lecture this Thursday about how to conduct research using local newspapers. There are several tours. Um, we're real excited about a mid-century modern architecture tour. Um, there's ones of Cooper Creek Cemetery and the Clear Creek Nature Preserve. Um, and there's also, at the end of the month, we have a preservation workshop with the Special Collections Department at the University of North Texas. So, lots of great events. Um, the Justin Heritage Foundation's also hosting a second annual ice cream social, sounds like a lot of fun, at their Gaston House. Um, and then Pilot Point is hosting a second annual storytime at the Bloomfield Schoolhouse. So, fun way to step back in time there. So, we just want to thank the Commissioners Court for your continued support of our historic preservation efforts across the county. And we hope that you'll encourage others to attend some of these events throughout the month. Um, if anyone's interested in learning more about our events, they can visit the Denton Revealed website, which is on the City of Denton website under Preservation Month, or follow us on any of our social media platforms. So, thank you.
Great, good, thank you, Kelsey. All right, I'll read this proclamation, I got a couple of comments afterwards. So, we have a, this is a court proclamation recognizing May as National Preservation Month. Whereas the National Trust for Historic Preservation established May as Preservation Month in 1973 is a way to promote historic places for the purpose of instilling national and community pride, promoting heritage tourism, and showing the social and economic benefits of historic preservation. Whereas Denton County and the City of Denton are celebrating with a series of events called Denton Revealed Preservation Month 2024. Whereas Preservation Month brings awareness to local historic properties and landmarks and serves as an effective tool for, an effective tool for maintaining community character while enhancing livability. Whereas historic preservation is relevant for communities across the nation, both urban and rural, and for Americans of all ages, all walks of life and all ethnic backgrounds. And whereas it is important to celebrate the role of history in our lives and the contributions made by dedicated individuals in helping to preserve the tangible aspects of the heritage that has shaped us as a people. And whereas Denton County continues to demonstrate its commitment to preservation as it grows and develops through ongoing historical and archaeological surveys, the nomination of significant cultural resources to Denton County State and National Register of Historic Places, the integration of historic elements with redevelopment, and the recognition, rehabilitation, and restoration of historic properties. And now therefore be it resolved, the Denton County Commissioners Court of Denton County, Texas, does hereby recognize May, 2024, as National Preservation Month, done in open court, this is the 30th day of April, 2024, upon a motion by the Chair.
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Edmondson. Any discussion? Well, I would just like to thank all of our, our staff and our partners at the City of Denton and across the county and our historic preservation. Do you want to compliment our court, this court and the courts over the last 20 or so years who, who have really invested in historic preservation through the staffing and, and funding the restoration of our buildings and other, other artifacts that Kim has under her custody and care, the catalog and the thousands of, thousands and thousands of pictures and artifacts. And so, I'd be remiss if I didn't, um, say in this public setting that if you have something that you would like to donate or to lend to us, we would love it. So, as you're always, you probably knows I'm always out scrounging around, asking for things. So, if you're going through your, your, if you're going through your items and you have something that you think you'd like to share with us or pass on, please, please consider Denton County, our museums, as, so we could continue to grow our collection. It's amazing the stuff that I see, uh, that, that people donate to us and, and it, and it may not have had great significance to them, but it actually tells a part of the story here in the county. And so, we are always on the lookout for things. And so, as you're going through and maybe editing down your collections or your personal artifacts. And also, what's important is oral histories. I think it's very important that we preserve our oral histories and so to capture those stories for our, uh, collection. And so, that's what's the Office of History and Culture, things that are in the past, but also things today, or the culture which we live today. Caroline made me feel old the last two days and she said, "Dad, I want to interview you for the history, for my history assignment", you know, do oral history. And I thought, "I remember doing that for my grandparents when I was in high school, but she wants to interview me." So, those, I know, so it kind of aged me a little bit there, Kevin. So, anyway, I said, "Absolutely, my dear, so we're gonna, we're gonna do that this week." But, um, it's important to capture those, those oral histories. So many people have great life stories and, and we just want to capture those. So, that's, that's part of our, our preservation efforts. Commissioner Edmondson?
I'd like to just point out, um, I learned Saturday when I spoke to the Daughters of the American Revolution, when they were dedicating a, a headstone for one of the matriarchs of Denton County, Patsy Wakefield. And we're in the middle of celebrating the 250th anniversary of our country.
Yes.
I had not realized that, shame on me. But it's something that we might want to promote with our historical society. And I did meet, uh, your counterpart from Collin County, who is a descendant of the Wakefields. There were three of them there. And it just was fascinating to me, I did not realize the difference between a veteran and a patriot for the DAR and I guess the SAR as well. The veterans and they, you need to be a descendant of a veteran or a patriot. Veterans are those who actually fought in our Revolutionary War. And the patriots are those who helped. They supplied supplies, they perhaps were spies, all kinds of things. And it was so interesting and I just couldn't believe I didn't realize that this was the 250th anniversary of our wonderful country. So, hopefully we can get some, some word out on that as well.
It's coming up. Commissioner Mitchell?
Kevin, you, oh.
Sorry, go right ahead.
No, no. Thank you for the job that you do. You know, it's, it's so important about telling the history. In these days and time, we're doing all we can to erase history. I mean, I'm talking legislators, representatives, and senators who think history should not be told. And unfortunately, some people didn't learn their history and they're just now learning. And erasing history does, does not mean that it didn't happen. It still happened. And I want to thank you all for preserving history. You know, a lot of times we look at something in our house and we think, "Well, that's not, not any good." But one man's trash is another man's treasure. So, as the judge said, we want to make sure that before we throw something away that we think is not worthy, that we call the museum and say, "Hey Peggy, Kim, tell us, uh, what about this? Can you use this and can you use that?" Because a lot of times we just, we just throw it away because it, we think it has no use, but it does. And I, you know, I can vouch for the judge. You better not let him know that you have anything.
You're cleaning out.
Because he's gonna come and get it. You don't have to bring it to him. He's gonna come and get it. But, because, you know, I always say he's an old soul. And because he loves to go to the museums and go around and collecting items for Denton County, because he wants to tell our history. It's so, so important after we're gone, that somebody is telling the history of Denton County. It doesn't just go away. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner Falconer.
I just, I, I, I think it's incredible what you're doing and, um, as, as everyone else has said, we cannot forget our history. And it's so important for, for us to document that and to keep what we can. And I appreciate you all being the custodians of all of that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any other comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank y'all. All right, let's go to, look at those others at the end. Let's go to item two. Members, are there any items on the consent agenda you would like to pull or do you have a motion to approve it as presented?
So, move.
We have a motion by Commissioner Falconer, seconded by Commissioner Williams. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Our consent agenda today consists of item 2A, approval of order-making appointments and any appropriate action. Item 2B is approval of the interdepartmental transfers. Item 2C is approval of budgetman request 101330 for the elections administration department to transfer $83,900 from toner supplies with $50,000 to postage 900, to equipment rental $15,000, to election rental expense, and $18,000 to election equipment maintenance for a total of $83,900. The transfers are needed to eliminate deficits due to continuing price increases and continuance of elections and any appropriate action. All right, let's go to item 5A, approval of bill report, payments from CSOD Community Corrections, TAIP, Sheriff's, Training Sheriff's, forfeiture, VIT interest. Indeed, forfeiture funds are presented for recording purposes only. Mr. May?
Thank you Judge, I have no changes today. Recommend approval as presented.
All right.
Move to approve.
We have a motion by Commissioner Williams, seconded by Commissioner Mitchell. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is item 5B, accept an approval of the 2023 Denton County Annual Comprehensive Financial Report, independent auditor's opinions in the single audit report by the audit firm Patillo, Brown &amp; Hill and any appropriate action. Good morning. Do you want to open this up, Jeff?
Sure, I sure will. Um, and I have John Manning here. He is with Patillo, Brown &amp; Hill. He's a partner. And, um, before he presents, I just wanted to go over a couple of numbers in our new act. For, uh, one of them, I wanted to mention our general fund, uh, fund balance increased to $16.3 million to just under $100 million at $99.2 million. And also, um, all funds increased $167 million and are now at $559 million. Some of that was due to bond issues. Um, one of the biggest changes, uh, shocking numbers to me, was our investment earnings in 2022 was $32.4 million as opposed to 2021 where it was $2.3 million. So, we had a dramatic change in the market. And so, anyway, um, and I wanted to again thank, uh, Patillo, Brown &amp; Hill. They were extremely helpful. We always have some new challenges. We had some new, uh, things we had to implement this year, which I'm sure he'll go over with you. So, anyway, here's John Manning.
Thanks Jeff. Thank you Judge and Commissioners. Uh, my name's John Manning. I'm a partner with Patillo, Brown &amp; Hill. Can y'all hear me okay?
Yes.
Yes. Um, I'm here to go over the results of the annual audit. I'm not sure if you have the ACFR in front of you. But I'm gonna hit some of the highlights. It's a, it's a 180-page document, so I'm not gonna go over every page. But I just want to hit some of the highlights and let you know some of the things. Jeff pointed out some of the highlights. He stole some of the things I was going to say, um, but they were very important. The, the change in investment income is so dramatic.
Yeah.
We used to fund a lot of positions by just interest revenue. In the last several years, that hasn't been the case, so that's great. What we're here for is to express an opinion on the financial statements. What we're here for is to express an opinion on the financial statements. The numbers are y'alls. The disclosures are y'alls. All we're doing is saying, do we agree with these and do they meet the criteria to be presented under GAAP basis financial statements? And that what we're saying here is we're offering an unmodified opinion, meaning we did not have to modify our opinion on the financial statements for material errors, control deficiencies, or anything that we think would prevent the numbers from being recorded properly. So of the four types of opinions that we can give, the unmodified is the best. Y'all have received that in the past. It's a three-page report, but I know y'all issue debt, y'all get grants, and a lot of those people that review your financials do look at that. And that does carry a lot of weight, making sure they know if they're giving you bond proceeds or grant proceeds, there's a good chance they're going to be spent properly. Just some highlights on the balance sheet of your governmental funds, which is your general fund debt service, your ARPA funds, your refunding bond fund, and all of your other major funds. Ended almost with six hundred and ninety million dollars of investments and about twenty-three million dollars worth of cash. So a lot of that money that's resting there, you're now getting paid for with, with the rise in interest rates. So even though there's a lot of money there, the return on that investment's going very well. The other thing that that's large here is your unearned revenue of about a hundred and thirty-eight million. That's still, majority of that is the unspent ARPA money that I know you guys are working through projects to, to make sure that those monies are spent in accordance with federal guidelines there. But not a lot of really risky items on the balance sheet. Pretty much predominantly ninety percent of its cash investments and things that involve grants or accounts payable. So a very basic financial statement. But as Jeff mentioned, if you look at the balance sheet, you see financial stability, you see reserves, and you see a county that if something unexpected does come up, will be able to financially handle those things. In looking at the income statement, several, there was some refunding bonds issued. We always appreciate the county looking for ways to save taxpayers' money. People are sensitive to debt. I know Jeff in his office and the Commissioners frequently go through and look at that market. I know with interest rates going up, that's not gonna be as, as easy to do anymore. But when you do have a chance to refund bonds, you guys always do. And this one ended up saving the taxpayers almost a million dollars by, by refunding those bonds early. So that's great. You also issued some new debt for various projects throughout the county. And as Jeff mentioned again, it's just shy of a hundred million in fund balance. Again, which, which shows a lot of stability and a lot of planning, a lot of adhering to budgets that, that you guys are, always seem to be working on budget as it's a huge deal. One thing that Jeff mentioned that was different this year that took more time was there was a new accounting standard that came out called GASB ninety-six, which makes us look at all of your IT subscription arrangements. Used to, you would just sign up for those, pay them every month or pay them every year. Now if they meet certain criteria, we have to accrue those and call them long-term debt. And so this year, with the help of Debt Book, Jeff and his team, I mean, I think there were over a hundred different agreements to evaluate and put through the process to see whether it met the criteria for this new standard. And at the end of the year, that was about six point five million of new quote-unquote debt that we had to accrue onto the balance sheet. Not a material amount at all, considering how much debt that, that y'all have and the size of the county. But just wanted to make sure that you knew that the auditing team was on top of this and had a process to make sure that this standard was handled accordingly. But really, everything looked good. We did not have any material weaknesses or significant deficiencies. Again, the financial statements promote stability, financial management responsibility and attention to detail. And we really appreciate Mr. May and his office. That's who we work with predominantly. But we went out to several different elected officials, different departments, doing fraud interviews, doing all these different things. And everybody knows that there is a internal control structure that must be followed. And I think that's one of the reasons why your financials look like this. They know there's a tone at the top and, you know, we appreciate how serious y'all take the financial position of the county. And I think it's reflected here in the financial statements. And like I said, it's a super huge document. And I will be glad to talk about this as long as you would like to. If you have questions, I'll answer them all day. This is what I do. But I realize y'all have a long meeting and just wanted to make sure that we also talk about, we're back to the March thirty deadline. Even with the new accounting standards, Jeff and his team made sure that we had all of our information to get this filed before March thirtieth, which is huge. So again, thank you all so much for letting us be of service to the county. And again, I'm here for questions if you need them.
All right, members, do you have any questions?
No, thank you so much for your.
Appreciate it. Appreciate it.
All right. All right, the chair will move to, for approval.
Second.
We have a motion by the chair, second by Commissioner Williams. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Next, thank you for being here. Thank you for coming up.
Thank you, Judge.
Glad to have you here in person. Thank you. Great job.
Yes.
As always. Next is item six A, approval of the report on proceeds from the online surplus auction, number two four two eight zero three, held in April twenty twenty-four.
Move to approve.
Motion by Commissioner Williams, second by Commissioner Falconer. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is item six B, approval of purchase or lease of vehicles for in fiscal year twenty twenty-four as recommended by the Vehicle Assessment Committee for fiscal year twenty twenty-five in an estimated amount of two million two hundred forty-six thousand three hundred seventy dollars for various cooperative contracts, ITB two three two seven nine seven fleet vehicles.
Move to approve.
Motion by Commissioner Williams, second by Commissioner Falconer. Any discussion?
Yeah, I think not going to use the Tahoes anymore.
No, we're, we're still purchasing the Tahoes as, as much as possible. Unfortunately, the last few years, we haven't even been able to spend the money that we allot just because they're not available.
Okay.
So we've taken a, we, we've decided to try to put as many orders out as possible to try to fill not only what we need now, but to fill the back orders as well. But we are occasionally making some adjustments to Tahos, to other vehicles that are available so we can, unfortunately, a lot of our vehicles are just, they're, they're over their wear date, if you will, on, and how we, how we decide whether the vehicle should continue in service or not.
Right, yeah.
And so we're having to make some adjustments that make not only good financial sense, but obviously to make sure the security and safety of our employees.
And another question, I should have called you.
No, you're okay.
About the police package. Goodness that, I mean, the, that's going on, those calls have gone up so much.
Yeah, there's obviously been an increase in some, some costs.
Yeah.
But, well, we just saw right there with the, the financial gentleman, you know, fortunately, the county's in a very strong financial position. And so we're able to make adjustments when necessary to still accommodate the cost of these, this equipment. And so we're very fortunate from that perspective for our county and our employees.
Thank you.
Yeah.
I know you're watching it.
No, absolutely. Excellent question, Commissioner.
Thanks for working on it.
Yes, sir.
Commissioner.
Appreciate you.
All right, we have a motion. Yes, go ahead.
I, I just want to thank Commissioner Williams for sitting on that committee. And I did see that, yes, everything seems, the inflation is a real thing, but I did see that you all have, through all your actions, still saving us money, which is a great thing. So thank you for that.
Perfect. All right, we have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is six C, approval of award of ITB two four two seven nine nine key control system products, software and services to Structure Works LLC and any appropriate action.
Move approve.
Motion by Commissioner Mitchell.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Edmondson. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is item six D, approval of award of RFP two three two seven nine six HVAC equipment replacement to DMI corporate, corporation. This is Decker Mechanical, any appropriate action? And I have a question, I guess, for purchasing, maybe facilities. Is this the same four buildings that we talked about in our, our workshop?
Yes, sir, it is. This is for the Mary and Jim Horn Government Center, the Stephen E. Copeland Government Center, Moore Street Facility and the Southwest Courthouse.
Okay. Is the scope the same as what we would discuss at the budget workshop? Because what was quoted then was much higher. The estimate was much higher.
The dates?
Ma'am?
I honestly cannot answer.
The price?
Yes.
Oh, okay.
Financial part of it.
Anyone from facilities here to?
Facilities here. Can I address it? I honestly cannot address that. I can find out for you, though.
Okay, why don't we just hold this one? We can maybe find out. We do have executive session today. Okay, thank you so much. We'll hold this one. Next is item seven A, approval of budget amendment request one zero one three two zero for the Department of Transportation Engineering to transfer one hundred forty-nine thousand five hundred dollars from surveys, titles and testing to technology software services for four thousand five hundred dollars in contract labor, road and bridge construction, one hundred forty-five thousand to cover a shortage and to extend the technology software services line item for the remainder of the fiscal year for the contract labor for the Copper Canyon HDPE replacement for drainage repair. Motion by Commissioner Edmondson.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Falconer. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next, item seven B, approval of budgetman request one zero one three four zero for judicial purchases to transfer one hundred forty-five thousand six hundred seventy-five dollars from fund balance with a hundred and forty thousand two hundred and seventy-five dollars to capital equipment and five thousand four hundred dollars to administrative equipment to cover the cost of purchasing twenty-five ballistic shields and twenty-five shield transport bags for the sheriff's deputies and any appropriate action.
Move to approve.
Motion by Commissioner Williams, second by Commissioner Edmondson. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is seven C, approval of budgetman request one zero one three five zero to transfer from general fund county vehicles unappropriated contingency to various vehicle line items and from road and bridge fund county vehicles unappropriated contingency to various line items for the purchase or lease of vehicles in fiscal year twenty twenty-four as recommended by the Vehicle Assessment Committee for fiscal year twenty twenty-five in the amount of two million two hundred forty-six thousand three hundred seventy dollars and to transfer from general fund county vehicles unappropriated contingency to various vehicle line items for shortages for the fiscal year twenty twenty-four vehicles in the amount of sixty-seven thousand six hundred and two dollars for a total amendment of two million three hundred thirteen thousand nine hundred and seventy-two dollars.
Move to approve.
Motion by Commissioner Williams, second by Commissioner Mitchell. Any discussion?
Judge, I have one thing.
Yes, pardon.
Sorry, I should have said this back in six B. I want to thank not only all the committee members that, that were involved in this, but I also want to thank all the, the different departments that came. They came very prepared this year. It was, it was a wonderful discussion. It went by very quickly. We were able to identify what the needs of each department based on them coming prepared. And I really appreciate it. And it makes it very simple and easy for us as a county to, to take care of our assets and take care of the citizens and the employees when everybody comes to the table prepared and, and ready. So I want to thank everybody for all their time and involvement. It was, it was wonderful. Thank you, Judge.
Perfect, thank you. All right, we have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is item eight A, report from Human Resources regarding hiring actions of elected officials. This is presented for recording purposes only. Gustavo.
Judge, Commissioners, good morning. We have one promotion in the county clerk, one promotion in the district clerk, six new hires in the sheriff's office. Four of those are detention officer ones. That's it for this week. Thank you.
Perfect, good, thank you. All right, we, that, again, is presented for recording purposes only. Next is item eight B, approval of the extension for the temporary financial support specialist one slot zero zero nine TR pay grade number five for the treasurer's office and any appropriate action.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Williams, second by Commissioner Falconer. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next, item nine A, approval of amendment number two on the Department of State Health Services to the Dishes Public Health Infrastructure Grant to revise the statement of work to change the date on which the grantee's final performance report and financial status report are due and any appropriate action. Motion by Commissioner Mitchell, second by Commissioner Edmondson. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is item ten A, I'm gonna pull this one for, for a future meeting, a future action. And next, let's go to item ten B, approval of the acceptance of approximately zero point one miles. This is a Liberty Road at the town of Providence Village limits, approximately zero point five miles east of Dr. Sanders to the town of Providence Village limits, approximately zero point one seven miles west of Maverick Lane, located in Commissioner Precinct One.
Move to approve.
Motion by Commissioner Williams, second by Commissioner Falconer. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. All right, next is item twelve A, approval of the twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five interlocal agreements for shared governance communications and dispatch services system between Denton County and the town of Crossroads Police Department, the Justin Community Fire Department, the Justin Police Department of Krugerville Police Department and the town of Trophy Club Fire and Police Departments and any appropriate action.
Move to approve.
We have a motion by Commissioner Williams, second by Commissioner Edmondson. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is item twelve B, approval of the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers agreement with Denton County for the twenty twenty-four patrol services at Lake Lewisville and any appropriate action.
Move to approve.
Motion by Commissioner Williams, second by Commissioner Falconer. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is thirteen A, approval of one, the notice of election for the May twenty-eight twenty twenty-four general primary runoff election Democratic Party and two, the notice of election for the May twenty-eight twenty twenty-four general primary runoff election Republican Party and any appropriate action. Motion by Commissioner Mitchell, second by Commissioner Edmondson. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next, item thirteen D, approval of laser fish scanning order designated as addendum number fourteen to the master services agreement, number two five eight two four with MCCILLC and any appropriate action. Motion by Commissioner Edmondson, second by Commissioner Mitchell. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is fourteen A, approval, addendum number two, to the master agreement for architectural service between Denton County, Texas and the, and Park Hill for the Horn Building County Clerk remodel and jail kitchen laundry stucco project. This is RFPQ two three two seven four five in the not to exceed amount of four hundred and ten thousand thirty-eight dollars and sixty cents. This is a Horn building renovation, hundred and fifty-seven, nine hundred and fifty dollars for the Denton County Courts Building County Clerk renovation, nine, ninety-two thousand two hundred and fifteen dollars for the Denton County Courts Building Records Management renovation, sixty-three thousand seven hundred and seventy-five dollars for the jail stucco, which is ninety-six thousand ninety-eight dollars and sixty cents with reimbursable expenses not to exceed four thousand five hundred dollars for the Horn renovation, four thousand five hundred dollars for the Denton County Courts Building Clerk renovation, four thousand five hundred dollars for the Denton County Courts Building Records Management and two thousand five hundred dollars for the jail stucco for a total of sixteen thousand dollars of funding for the Horn and Denton County Courts Building Clerk RM renovations to come from twenty twenty tax notes in the Denton County Courts Building, line item eight four seven five six zero nine zero one zero and funding for the jail kitchen laundry stucco to come from the twenty nineteen tax notes laundering kitchen jail remodel. This is line item two zero seven five two one nine zero four zero as recommended by the Denton County Purchasing Director.
Move to approve.
Motion by Commissioner Williams, second by Commissioner Falconer. Did you want to say something?
Yes.
Okay, go ahead, sir.
So court members, I just wanted to remind you, I know y'all remember that this is kind of two parts, the, the stucco part for the jail, which we're all aware of, but reminder[1687.23] on the other part with the county courts building, this Park Hill is doing our, the kind of preliminary prep work that we have to do before we actually start the real work at the courts building. So we have to do some little juggling of our people, and we appreciate our staff who have agreed to do some of those kind of temporary places. And so this is, this is our first step in getting all those, those pieces taken care of so that we can move on to the even bigger project of the courts building, which is the next item. Thank you so much.
All right, we have a motion and a second, any other discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries unanimously. I want to thank you, Commissioner, for all your efforts with that. Next, let's go to item fourteen B, approval of the agreement for construction agreement at risk. This is Denton County Courts Building Expansion and Remodel, bid number two three two seven seven seven, between Denton County, Texas, and Burn Construction Services, an amount of five million two hundred seventy seven thousand three hundred and sixteen dollars, which amount consists of the pre-construction phase, both scopes. This is the services fee in the amount of thirty five thousand dollars, and the scope one services fee in the amount of six hundred and forty five thousand four hundred and eighty three dollars, the scope two services fee in the amount of two million nine hundred and seventy six thousand eight hundred and thirty three dollars, and the CMAR contingency of one million six hundred and twenty thousand with funding for pre-construction phase services, both scopes. Scope two services is CMAR contingency to come from the twenty twenty three tax notes. This is line item nine one seven five six zero nine zero one zero, and funding for scope one services to come from the twenty twenty tax notes, line item eight four seven five six zero nine zero one zero, as recommended by the Denton County Purchasing Director.
Move approval.
With motion by Commissioner Falconer, second by Commissioner Williams, any discussion? Yes, sir.
I'll land on this one, too. So as I said, so this is the major expansion that we're talking about for the courts building. And I believe this is the first CMAR construction manager at risk program we've done, right? Or at least, at least recently. And it's a, I don't know if you want to jump in, but the, I think this is, this is going to be a really good, I think, opportunity to see how this works. But the idea of this is that we're able to actually get the guaranteed maximum price for this project kind of earlier on, and we're working with our construction manager kind of very early in this entire process. So I think it's a great way to kind of collaborate for the benefit of all parties involved, and we're excited to see how that works in this whole process. But I think it's going to be a great opportunity to hopefully save money at the same time maintaining great quality.
Perfect, great. All right, we have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries unanimously. Next is fourteen C, approval of the memorandum of understanding between the Texas Division of Emergency Management at Denton County, Texas, where the Denton County Department of Emergency Management will participate in the Texas Emergency Management Assistance Teams Program, and any appropriate action. Motion by Commissioner Edmondson, second by Commissioner Mitchell, any discussion?
Aye.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
No, I just gave my aye a little too soon.
Oh, you gave your aye, okay. I'll take it whenever I get it.
Quick on the trigger.
All right, we have a motion and a second, and multiple ayes.
Yes.
All in favor, so we have a motion carries unanimously. I will say, I want to thank our Department of Emergency Management for their willingness to assist across the state of Texas. This agreement allows them to go and assist the Texas Department of Emergency Management. I appreciate their willingness to do that. So I think that's great. It's going above and beyond to help our fellow Texans. All right, next, let's go to item seventeen, community updates. Do we have any updates? We'll start with Commissioner Precinct One.
Okay. And Judge, when you get a chance, I do have some information on six D for you, by the way, that I received from the director of facilities. Let's see what we've got going on. Congratulations to the Sanger Economic Development Corporation, which recently announced that they received the Texas Economic Development Council twenty twenty three economic excellence recognition. So congratulations to Sanger on that. We are one month away from the first annual rodeo in Salina, which will be held at South Fork Ranch from May thirty first to June second. Tickets are available on rodeosalina.com. And that's it? Oh, I do want to say, I apologize, Judge, it's playoff season for softball and baseball, and I want to wish all of the Denton County teams best of luck.
All right, next is Commissioner Falconer.
Thank you, Judge. So lots of things happening in the, in the springtime here. So in Carrollton, we have the Oak Hills and Thomas Splash Parks opening up, and those will be on May first, and they'll have a little celebration for that at each of those parks. And then in the third, from seven to eight, will be a sunset stroll with the Texas Naturalists at the Elm Fort Nature Preserve, and that's going to be for all people of all abilities. So come on out for that. And then the infamous or famous, may the fourth be with you on May fourth, and that will be downtown Carrollton. I might also remind people that that is Election Day as well, so don't forget that. Crossroads has got the Crossroads Summer Market on May fourth, and that's at Crossroads Town Park. And Little Elm has on May fourth, their Spring Clean and Green, that's at sixteen hundred Mark Tree Lane, and that's eight to noon. The Colony has their Arbor Day event on May fourth at Lions Club Park, and their Spring Market on May fourth at Grandscape from ten to three. Lots of stuff happening on May fourth.
Commissioner Mitchell. I'm sure there is.
Copper Canyon is having a makeup day for their spring trail cleanup on May the fourth. And you know, we have a lot of prayer gatherings going around the community. We have one at six forty five tomorrow morning in Lewisville, the Mayor's Prayer Breakfast. We have one at seven thirty AM at the Metro, Metro Crescendo Carrollton. And then we have our annual prayer day for Denton County here at twelve o'clock in the courtroom if it rains. Also, we have in Flower Mountain on May second, we have Wellness Nature Walk, Bike with the Blue on May fourth in Flower Mountain. And Lewisville is going to have their gala on the third in Lewisville, and hopefully it won't rain us out like it did last year. Holland Village is going to have Move In the Park on May third, seven to ten PM at Doubletree Ranch. They're also going to have a Holland Village Art Festival, May fourth, at ten AM to six PM. Lake Dallas is having City Trade Days in Hornblower's Market on May fourth, eight AM to noon. And you can walk and talk, if you can do both of those things at the same time, in Lewisville on, on the trail, on Edmonds at Central Park. Car Fit with Medical City, May second, nine AM on Valley Parkway. Be careful if you, on North Valley Parkway, we have that all torn up. And we also have First Fridays in Lewisville, always on May third. Water Drive, the Lake City's First Responders, that's going on now from April fifteenth through May thirty first, so come by. And if you'd like to donate, there is a scan that you, a QR code that you can scan and give money, and we certainly would appreciate it. Thank you.
Perfect. Commissioner Edmondson?
Thank you. First of all, I'd like to remind everyone that today is the last day to early vote for municipal and school board elections. The actual election then will be on May fourth, which is a Saturday, and I've heard several other events going on, on, on May fourth. In fact, now on May third, in Argyle, we've got Shoot for the Stars Basketball Tournament and Music. That's going to be at Argyle High School, the third of May through the fifth. And in Denton, we have International Women's Mountain王 biking day. Bobby, are you interested in going to that with me?
I'm ready.
Okay. This is going to be on the fourth, at ten to noon, at the Clear Creek Natural Heritage Center. And then, over in Lantana, they're going to have their Spring Garage Sale, which is the fourth, from eight AM to three PM. And it says this sale is across the Lantana community. Rowan Oak is having a roundup on May fourth from noon to nine at Oak Street. It's a charity event benefiting the Guns and Horses Foundation of North Texas and Speedway Children's Charities. It's a free family event. There will include a state cook-off competition, eating competitions, live music activities for the kids, and more. Sounds like a fun day there in Rowan Oak. In Trophy Club, they're going to have on May fourth from ten to noon, Touch a Truck. This is at Parkview Drive, the Independence Park East. It says, bring the family for the opportunity to hop in the driver's seat of a fire truck, police car, heavy equipment, and more. I know the kids love that. And then also in Trophy Club on May fifth, from two to five on Trophy Club Drive, they have small business showcase and open house. They're going to support local small businesses and artisans at this event. They'll have a bounce house, lawn games, food trucks, and more. So it's going to be a fun time all across Precinct Four.
Perfect, that's great. I would just like to remind everybody that National Small Business Week is April the twenty eighth through May fourth. We are fortunate to have so many small businesses across Denton County, and hardworking small business owners appreciate our support. And now is a perfect opportunity to stop by and to shop and dine. So anyway, those are great, great community updates. Let's go back to our purchasing item. Let's go back to item sixteen. I do believe we have an update and some staff here as well.
Oh, okay.
Yes, sir, I heard from Scott, actually.
Yep, perfect.
Go right ahead.
He got back to me, and actually, I think Dell might be here in the office as well, but prices actually came in, the proposal prices came in cheaper than what the quotes originally came in as. Most likely, the vendors that we received the quotes from did not have the exact specs that were needed on those HVAC equipment replacements, and that is why. If Dell, if you want to say anything?
Good morning, Judge, Commissioners.
Good morning.
One of the things that happened was the project was actually looked at two years ago, and since that time, market stabilized a little bit. That, two years ago, that was worst case scenario, because it was fluctuating daily, basically. Now that they've come back, they've reassessed it, we are seeing a more accurate account of what it's going to cost, and prices have actually come down, as well as timeframes to receive the equipment.
The better.
So it's a benefit to the county. We're going to save a little bit of money for this project.
Very good.
Yep. Perfect, thank you.
All right, so while we're on that item, the chair will move for approval.
I'll second.
Second by Commissioner Williams, any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries unanimously. Let's go back. We'll do item three A, which is approval of resolution recognizing Kirby Hicks' retirement and any appropriate action. This is a resolution recognizing Kirby Hicks for eight years of dedicated service to Denton County, and the Denton County Commissioners Court, Denton County, Texas, during a regular session on the thirtieth day of April twenty twenty four, consider the following resolution: Whereas Kirby Hicks Driver, Equipment Operator Two has been a loyal employee with the Denton County Department of Transportation and Engineering since April the twenty seventh twenty sixteen, and will retire on April the thirtieth twenty twenty four with eight years of service, whereas Kirby Hicks faithfully and efficiently provided excellent leadership in his position as Driver Equipment Operator Two. And whereas Kirby was a dedicated employee, provided a high level of quality and valuable service to the Department of Transportation and Engineering, and has earned the respect of all who worked with him. Whereas Kirby's devotion to assisting his coworkers was greatly appreciated and respected by his fellow colleagues, and he will be deeply missed. And whereas the Department of Transportation and Engineering would like to thank Kirby for his commitment and hard work throughout his career, and wish him well in his retirement. And now therefore be it resolved that Denton County Commissioners Court, Denton County, Texas, does hereby extend to Kirby Hicks our sincere and grateful appreciation for his dedicated service to Denton County. We congratulate Kirby on his well-earned retirement, extend our best wishes to him for continued success, happiness, and good health in the years to come. Done in open court, this is the thirtieth day of April twenty twenty four, upon a motion made by Commissioner Edmondson, second by Commissioner Mitchell, any discussion? Well, Kirby, I would just like to say thank you. I'm sorry you couldn't be with us today. Personally, I hope you get to tune in and watch this, this resolution and this meeting as we take just a moment to thank you for investing part of your career here in Denton County. We wish you all the best and had a great retirement.
Thank you.
All right, thank you so much. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries unanimously. Next, let's go to item three C, which is approval of a proclamation recognizing April the thirtieth twenty twenty four as National Therapy Animal Day in Denton County, and any appropriate action? And we, oh, do you want me to not read it?
I can read.
I'll read it. I will go ahead and accept the motion by Commissioner Mitchell, and second by Commissioner Edmondson. The court proclamation reads, recognizing National Animal Therapy Animal Day in Denton County, whereas there are thousands of pet partner therapy animal teams serving in communities across the United States, whereas pet partners is designated April thirtieth as National Therapy Animal Day, and whereas specific research shows that interacting with therapy animals can reduce stress, relieve depression, slow heart rate, lower blood pressure, and strengthen the immune system, and whereas therapy animal teams in the town of Flower Mountain play an essential role in improving human health and well-being through the animal, the human and animal bond, and whereas therapy animal teams interact with a variety of people in our community, including veterans, seniors, patients, students, and those approaching end of life, and whereas these exceptional therapy animals who partner with their human companions bring comfort and healing to those in need, whereas we encourage more pet owners to consider becoming pet partners, volunteers to help our community by creating greater access to meaningful therapy animal visits. And now therefore be it resolved that Denton County Commissioners Court does hereby proclaim April thirtieth twenty twenty four as National Therapy Animal Day. In Denton County, we call upon all citizens to celebrate our therapy animals and their human handlers, and salute the service of therapy animal teams in our community and communities across the nation. Done in open court, this is the thirtieth day of April twenty twenty four, upon a motion made by Commissioner Mitchell, and second by Commissioner Edmondson, any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries unanimously. I think we got all those items. Let's continue on with our executive session. I know we have a long executive session today. All right, let's go to fifteen A, Texas Government Code five five one zero seven two, deliberation regarding real property, close meaning deliberate the purchase, exchange, lease, or value of real property. If deliberation in an open meeting would have a detrimental effect on the position of a government body in negotiations with a third person.